I'd like to call the January tenth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of the Lynchburg Planning Commission to order. The first order of business today will be the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are unanimously approved. The next order of business before we get into the public hearing would normally be the election of officers for the coming year. Chairman Peralt is not here and Commissioner Kinsey Johnson is not here. We can always defer the election of officers until the January twenty-fourth meeting when we anticipate that they will be here. It is fine with me either way as the Vice Chairman, presiding officer today, as to what the pleasure of the commission is, but my thought would be that we would defer the election of officers until we have the entire commissioners, all the commissioners here.
We need a motion?
If you want to make the motion like that-
I'd like to defer the election of officers until the January twenty-fourth meeting.
All right, and do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? No. Again, the permit passed unanimously. Now, we will move into the public hearing portion of the agenda. I'm going to deviate from the agenda just slightly because of what I think is a non-controversial issue, and I would like the first item to be the Liberty University street naming issue. And let me just give an overview. I know we have a number of visitors here, probably your first time at a planning commission meeting, and we welcome you. This is the reason that this commission exists is to solicit input from public citizens and interested parties into matters that come before the commission. And we are citizens of Lynchburg and just as like everyone else here that has an interest in property in Lynchburg is, and we take your comments very seriously. Generally, how these hearings go is that the item is called, staff makes a presentation, and this is the staff over here across from the commissioners, and then we hear public comment. And we call people in support of a petition and then opposed to a commission. And you come up and sit up in front of this microphone and you sign in with your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes of public comment. And then after we've heard from everybody who wishes to speak, then the commission discusses that particular petition and then takes a vote and makes a recommendation to city council. And the only thing this commission does is make recommendations to city council. Sometimes our recommendations are consistent with the staff, sometime they're not consistent with the staff. Sometimes our recommendations to city council are followed by city council, sometimes they are not followed by city council. And if you speak here today and your position is not affirmed in this vote, you're completely entitled to go to city council when it comes up on their agenda and speak to them, and that is whether we agree with your comments or not. But this is a very open process, and normally we try to get things resolved here at this hearing today from our perspective. There has been an issue that has been raised, though, about notification as far as the petition for the property on Wood Road. And we are going to hear public comment today, but we are not going to close the meeting. We are going to have to continue the meeting until January the twenty-fourth because we are concerned that the notification has a technical flaw in it. And it doesn't mean that we're trying to chill anybody out or that we're trying to play a hide the game. We're just out of abundance of caution, wanting to make certain that the technical notifications of the code of Virginia are strictly followed. So I will invite, after we do the first matter, the Liberty University street naming, then I will call for the conditional use permit at ten oh-two Wood Road and eighty-one twenty-nine Timberlake Road to be heard. And if you're here and want to speak either in support of or against that petition, we are certainly welcome to hear your comments. But we want you to know that it's not going to be, quote unquote, "decided" by this commission today because it is going to be continued until the next hearing on the twenty-fourth of January. And if you are going to speak today, you may want to hold your comments until the twenty-fourth, to the meeting on the twenty-fourth. That's really completely up to you. I think I've outlined how we're going to proceed today, but I wanted everybody to understand what the procedure is and again to emphasize that this is not some delay the game or, you know, some kind of a trick that anybody's trying to play with anybody. We are continuing the meeting today to the twenty-fourth out of an abundance of caution to make certain that there's no technical issues with the requirements of the code of Virginia because that could negate the whole process and we'd have to start completely over again and subject to lawsuits and things of that nature. With that said, I hope everybody feels comfortable with the explanation. We're going to go ahead and hear the Liberty University street naming petition, and then we'll move to the one that I suspect almost everybody is here for. Staff? Rachel, would you like to present the petition, the new business of Liberty University street naming, please?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, members of Planning Commission. This is an administrative item for Planning Commission, really, so there's not a public hearing on this. City code says that new street names should come to Planning Commission for comment to be forwarded to city council. There's no recommendation of approval or denial required, but this is what Liberty University is proposing to do. As you know, the bridge overpassing four sixty has been constructed. Can't find my mouse. Let me use the one in the right computer. The new bridge is here. Liberty University would like Regent's Parkway to be the street that goes over the new bridge. So here, they've submitted a map showing the future plans for how Regent's Parkway will be aligned coming across the bridge, and this part right here is already existing as Liberty Mountain Drive. So it would be needing to be renamed to Regent's Parkway, so submitted for Planning Commission's comment.
Commissioners?
Just clarification on the artwork there, yeah?
The artwork.
The circle things there?
Yes, that road will be closed?
Right, so their long-term plan is to take out this portion of Regent's Parkway and realign it to come around and through the parking lot and to meet up with the bridge.
That's what I thought, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Correct.
We don't have the comments on that.
Tom? Any comments? We don't need to do a motion, anything else, Rachel, it's just for comments?
Correct. If anyone has any issues they want to highlight or anything, we can take that down in the minutes, but if we're neutral otherwise, then we can move on to the next item.
Yep. All right, the next item of business is the petition of Danny Tyree for a conditional use permit at one zero zero two Wood Road and eight one two nine Timberlake Road to allow the construction of a forty-three unit townhouse development in an R-three medium-density residential and B-three community business district. Staff like to?
Yep, that would be me. So, Mr. Vice Chair, members of Planning Commission, the subject property is currently zoned R-three medium-density residential and B-three community commercial, community business district. Uses permitted by Wright in the R-three district include single-family homes and duplexes with densities of up to ten point eight nine units per acre. B-three community business districts allow a variety of commercial and residential, basically single-family homes by Wright. Townhome developments require approval of a conditional use permit in both the R-three and the B-three districts. The petition proposes the construction of a forty-three unit townhome development with associated parking at a density of nine point six four units per acre, which is below the ten point eight nine dwelling units per acre allowed by Wright in the R-three district. The property is recommended for both medium-density and community commercial uses on the city's future land use map. Medium-density residential areas are recommended for single-family homes, duplexes, and townhomes with densities of up to twelve units per acre. Community commercial areas are recommended for varying retail and mixed-use development serving several neighborhoods and up to the entire city. A traffic study was not required for the development by the city's transportation engineer as the project would generate less than the threshold of fifty peak hour trips and five hundred daily trips. Wood Road and Mountain View Road are approximately eighteen feet, which is below the city's standard of twenty-four feet in width. A traffic signal does currently exist at the intersection of Laxton Road and Timberlake Road, which is accessible to the development from Mountain View Drive. A study of Timberlake Road, of the Timberlake Road corridor is currently being conducted by the Virginia Department of Transportation. Stormwater management is being proposed to be addressed by the use of detention facility in the southeast corner of the property, while stormwater quality would be addressed by the purchase of off-site nutrient credits. City's police and fire departments had no comments of concern regarding the conditional use permit proposal. While the site is recommended for higher densities on the city's future land use map, and it is reasonable due to its close proximity to commercial areas, access to goods and services without an automobile will prove to be difficult. These issues do currently exist for the entire area and cannot be solved by this one development. Based upon the fact that the development is below the density, which is currently permitted by Wright in the R-three district, and below the future land use recommendation of twelve units per acre, the planning division does and did recommend approval of the conditional use permit. As the Vice Chair mentioned, fifteen point two twenty-two oh-four C of the code of Virginia requires notification of adjacent localities when an application for a special exception is within a half mile of another locality. This notification of Campbell County was not done within the ten-day requirement, and while planning staff has spoken with Campbell County and they are aware of the petition, due to this notification error, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission hold the public hearing today, but keep it open until January twenty-fourth. On January twenty-fourth, Planning Commission would close the public hearing, have their deliberations, and then make a recommendation to city council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. At this point in the public hearing process, is there anyone that is here to speak on behalf of this petition? If you could come forth and share your name with us and sign in, we would appreciate it.
You know you've got ten.
Okay.
I'll let you know if you get them close.
All right.
Good evening, my name is Norm Walton, I'm with Perkins and Orson. We produced the plans for Mr. Tyree for this development and coming forward representing him for the CUP. As Tom mentioned, we are asking for a CUP to allow townhouses to be constructed on this parcel, which is dual-zoned, R-three and B-three. We would like to remind you that we are proposing a density less than what's allowed by code, nine point six units per acre as opposed to the ten point nine. On top of the density being less than which is allowed, there is no business being proposed in the B-three portion of this property. So we are essentially saying that we're somewhat downgrading a portion of this property as we're going with the residential use, and this results in less traffic and a less intense use than what could be done by Wright, especially with the B-three portion of the property. This lower density allows, is due to a more spacious unit. We are not at the minimum width for townhouses, units as allowed by code. The units will have an architectural facade, which have a mixture of materials, they'll have a craftsman-style look. Some of the units in Cornerstone and Braxton Park, which are in the general vicinity of this area, will have a similar style to those townhouses. We're thinking that the units are going to be marketed at just under two hundred thousand dollars. This is not intended to be a student housing project. We are not intending on these units to be leased, they are to be individual units sold by Mr. Tyree, so this is not intended to be a student housing project. As mentioned, the project is small enough that it does not require a traffic study. We do know there are traffic issues at the intersection of Laxton Road and Timberlake Road. As Mr. Martin mentioned, VDOT is doing a study on the Timberlake Road corridor, and hopefully some of the traffic issues will be resolved with that study. We understand this is a very nice and quiet neighborhood. We've been in this neighborhood, Mr. Tyree grew up in this area, so we understand a lot of the concerns as far as what is perceived as an intrusion into this neighborhood. But also, there's a property owner who, with her heirs, has owned this property for a number of years. It would not like to own it anymore. They would like the opportunity to sell the property, and, you know, in order to sell this property, more than likely will need to be developed. I don't think the tract will lend itself for a single-family house, but it needs to be developed. We did have a neighborhood information meeting on Monday evening, several of the property owners were there. I recognize a few of the faces here that were there on Monday afternoon. Some of the things that were brought up that we're considering more specifically is the additional screening around the property. We show the screening ended where our property adjoins R-one property, which is required by code. Several of the residents asked, could we extend that all the way to Wood Road, and we are taking that under consideration. Several other things that were discussed at the neighborhood information meeting was security during construction, as a number of the houses along Lockwood back up to this property, so during construction, their backyards, they feel would be exposed. Containment of trash during construction, traffic of the site, both during construction and the ultimate build-out of the project, and the necessity of townhouses were questioned at the neighborhood information meeting. Mr. Tyree is not only the developer, but he will be the contractor, so several of those items that were mentioned during construction, he will handle personally. So he will be the G.C. on this project, he will be on the project on a daily basis, and hopefully can, you know, take care of some of those items that were mentioned being a concern during construction. We believe that this is, you know, the right product and the right project at the right time. Cornerstone is pretty much developed, built out, and the townhomes that are there are pretty much sold out. Windhurst is the same way. We were fortunate enough to work with the Braxton Park project, the last phase especially, and that project has been sold out. So on this side of town, new townhouses, we don't see or not aware of a new townhouse project that's coming in on this side of town in the immediate future. And it seems that townhouses are becoming the starter home now, you know, with the new regulations on banking and lending, it seems like that the price point that these units will be offered at will kind of give couples who are starting out the opportunity to own a house, even though it's a townhouse, but will end up owning a piece of property that they can live in and build some equity in. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have now or during your deliberation. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Walton. I think, just from a procedural viewpoint, so this is going to be continued until the twenty-fourth. I think it's probably wise for us to hold any questions. I assume you'll come back on the twenty-fourth.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And we may ask you to redo your, since Commissioner Johnson isn't here and Chairman Peralt is not here, we may ask you to redo your whole ten-minute presentation again, but-
Absolutely, can do.
I think we'll hold the questions until the twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf or in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the petition? Sir, if you'd like to come forward, please?
Yeah, and if you could go ahead and sign the signature.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name's Tim Brown, I live at one two two five Wood Road. Something that was probably never been addressed on this. A lot of people use Wood Road and Mount View as a cut-through to bypass the light at Laxton Road. There is a hundred-plus student daycare center being built in my backyard right across from B-Drive. The amount of traffic that comes through between Wood and Mountain View is going to increase because nobody's going to want to go to the light to pick their kids up, they're going to cut through that road. I've lived there for about eight years, and since purchasing my home, I've had a townhouse built next to me, a house built across the street from me, a homeless shelter put in Catty Corner from me, and I've watched the value of my property go down. Despite being taxed to praise higher, I've recently had my house appraised, and I've lost about seven thousand dollars in equity, and a lot of it is due to how much congestion is being built around me. I don't think this project's a smart idea. I think as far as a safety issue goes with the road and people cutting through Wood and Mount View, I'm sure everybody here can probably say how many times they've almost been hit on Mountain View or Wood Road. Also, our road is one of the last roads that's cleared during snow removal, and everybody that can probably agree with me, coming out of Wood Road, I'm sure everybody's ended up on Timberlake at least at one point because you hit your brakes and you slide right out into Timberlake. So I think from a safety standpoint, I think it's a really bad idea with this townhouse, plus the daycare going in at Laxton Road. I think you're going to see a lot of increase in accidents and things like that, and I just don't want to see it. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone to speak, any additional person to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anybody else that's here to speak against the petition?
Will comments, I'm sorry. Will comments, since you said we have to come back the twenty-fourth, we'd better come back and make comments then. You said we can make comments now. Will these comments be carried forward to the next meeting and the other people not here on your side?
Yeah.
Will they be able to hear those comments?
Well, they'll be part of the record for the meeting on the twenty-fourth, you know. I'll leave it up to your own determination as to whether you're going to be more effective having those meeting, those comments be part of the record, or whether you'd like to come back on the twenty-fourth and make them in person.
Thank you.
Can we at least get a show of hands of those who are opposed to this?
No, that's not appropriate at this time.
It's not appropriate?
No.
Well, just, you don't want us all-
Oh, you mean from the commissioners or from the group? No, no, from the commissioners of the group. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, if we want to, if you have a group of people here that have a common spokesman or you want to have somebody speak for a group of you, that's completely appropriate.
No, I would just, I would like to see a show of hands of how many want to speak opposed to it.
Yeah, but not of the commissioners?
No, right, right.
Yeah, okay.
No, not the commissioners, other people here. We just had a spokesman spoke probably a lot of what would be said, and maybe more on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
But you don't really get the impact of it unless you see how many people here are really opposed to this project the way it's going.
Excuse me, may I, may I be heard? I'm the property owner directly across the street from the entrance on Wood Road.
Sir, sir, we-
Yes, sir.
If you want to come up and speak against the petition, you're entitled to do so, but you need to announce yourself, you need to sign in.
How may I do that, please?
Well, why don't you go ahead and come on up and do that, but I would like to pick up on this gentleman's suggestion about a show of hands for those that are here that are opposed, that the other gentleman spoke on behalf of. If you could raise your hands.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. I count nineteen.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Have y'all received any emails?
Sir, we can only take them one time at a time. All right, let's, I think there's twenty-one hands that have been raised, and if the record could reflect that the last gentleman's comments were supported by a show of hands by twenty-one people, I think that would be helpful for the meeting on the twenty-fourth. Now, sir, if you'd like to come up and make some comments opposed to the petition, you're welcome to do so.
Is this the appropriate time only for opposition, or how about neighborhood environmental impact concerns? Because I have a handicapped son-
Sir, if you could, yeah, if you could announce your name and sign into the register first, please.
Okay, I have signed in here, is that?
Yes, and what is your name?
My name is George Mickless. I own the property at one zero one one Wood Road. According to the map, the one that is on the board on the far-left-hand corner, my home is at the intersection of Wood Road and Mountain View. Now, my concerns are this. The road surfaces on both Wood Road and Mountain View Drive are narrow. Two delivery trucks cannot pass each other without one of them going into the grass. We do not have sidewalks. There are handicapped people that live on this street and use Wood Road regularly to access businesses on Timberlake Road. My son is visually impaired, he walks with a white cane. He needs to use this road without sidewalks at this time to access Taco Bell and Apple Market to get groceries. There is a lady that lives on up the street that uses a cart, a four-wheel, I don't know what to call it, a scooter. She regularly, daily, she is on Wood Road. Yet, we do not have traffic enforcement to stop people from shortcutting this corner. And they, if it wasn't for a utility pole and a fire hydrant in my front yard, I swear tractor-trailers would go through my front yard trying to make the turn because they follow their GPS or they call Lowe's, and Lowe's gives them directions how to get around the red light. So my concern is for the handicapped citizens that live in this area, this neighborhood. It's also for the residents who walk, who, as I said, we don't have sufficient traffic enforcement. There are, you can hear engines, RPMs racing as they come up from Taco Bell up in front of my house to slam on the brakes and to turn left onto Mountain View Drive with little or no care for pedestrians. I am not necessarily opposed to planning and expansion, but I have to ask this board, do the facilities of the street, will it manage forty-four units and the increased traffic that my street will have if it's left in the present condition without improvement?
All right, thank you very much for your comments, sir. We'll take them very seriously.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else here to speak against the petition? I'll just take them.
My name's Andrew Glover, I live on fifteen oh four Lockwood Drive. I recently bought the house and have loved the neighborhood. It's one of the reasons my wife and I moved to the neighborhood, it was a quiet neighborhood. As you're driving down, you're getting away from the townhouse developments, you're getting away from the business districts. There's large yards with very developed oaks and trees and just areas where my family can feel safe. I have two little boys, ages five and four. They play in our driveway. When they grow up, they're going to be riding bikes on the street. And luckily, we live far enough away from where this development is, is that my family's safe, but as many of the concerns have been voiced, including both the two speakers prior to me, I have major concerns on the road infrastructure there. Wood Road, which has already been acknowledged as being less than the desired amount by city- Wood Road, which has already been acknowledged as being less than the desired amount by City Code, I believe the staff member mentioned that that is, the width of the road is below standard. I echo the fact that it is used as a major cut-through. The plans that I've seen don't really allow for the increased traffic on that road. There's just major concerns on getting in and out of that neighborhood already before you add 44 more units or 43 more units. The, it's going to increase traffic, it really is. And there's no good way around it. I've come through Wood Road or Mountain View Road trying to take a left on Wood Road and have been nearly hit on a number of occasions. I think every person in this room has been nearly hit on a number of occasions by people who are using it to avoid a traffic light at an intersection that's already known, Laxton Street and Timberlake, that is already known to have issues. So you have one issue at Laxton and Timberlake, and now you're just going to cause another issue or compound an issue at Wood Road and Mountain View Road. And that's just without a major concern, a passing lane, some sort of local-only access. I don't think a light would work, but even that would be better. There needs to be consideration to allow traffic, especially when you have construction vehicles in and out of that area. Construction vehicles take up a huge amount of space. And, you know, the previous gentleman before me had mentioned how you can't have two tractor-trailers passing each other. I challenge you to pass a tractor-trailer and your little compact car. You can't do it. And if they're going to be on that site, they're going to be parked on the road and you're going to be trying to get by them. You can't. So major concerns on the road infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll take your remarks into consideration. I know I saw one or two additional hands back there. If you want to come forth then?
My name is Ann Fares, and I live at 1000 Wood Road. I live right beside where they're planning the development, between that and the Taco Bell. Other people mentioned my concerns about the traffic. The only thing I wanted to add to that is that Mountain View comes out onto Laxton Road right in front of the high school, where you have all the teenage drivers, and it's a high-traffic area with inexperienced drivers right there. There are no other outlets from that neighborhood. The backside of it, there's no other way out except Mountain View and Timberlake. When they put in this new development, to me, it only has one outlet also, which in my mind could be a safety hazard if there were a fire or anything like that. You've got one way in and the same way out. Also, I was questioning that there's only one dumpster for 44 townhomes. That doesn't seem like enough to me. The other thing is the private driveway. My driveway is the one right there where they have it curving down in that little triangle shape. That's a shared driveway. That's in the deed to my home. It's been there for 50 years. I don't really see any reason why they need to cut over and make me move my driveway. I just don't understand that, don't see a reason for it. And the builder said that there's, he's not required to put a fence or any vegetation between that property and my property. But when I checked, Section 35.1-56 Clustered Dwellings, it says in here that it is required that they put, a fence would be my preference, between that property and mine because none of those townhomes are going to back up right against my yard. And there's no privacy. I think that line needs to be defined. That property line between the two would need to be defined. I think that's all that I had to add. I do think that the traffic is going to be a huge problem. And the fact that there's no other outlet, and it does come out right in front of the high school, where you have lots of teenage drivers.
Do you sign in?
I will.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your comments, ma'am. I think I saw one or two additional hands back. If you want to come forth, sir?
Excuse me, I'm Byron Woods. I live on 128 Seven Oaks Drive, which the street of Seven Oaks Drive has probably about half of the different dwelling locations. It is probably 20-some on that street versus the 40-some that are proposed here. I think that it's, seems apparent that the requirements for what can be built on this lot, there's nothing really that prevents it, that it seems like it meets within the guidelines, within the, how many units are allowed per acre, et cetera. It seemed like, in many ways, it seemed like it would meet the requirements. I think the biggest problem is that it is real apparent to anybody who is trying to go through this intersection or trying to access or come or go out of this neighborhood, that the traffic is really a problem. That there is going to have to be, if with the approval of this, if it is approved, there are just going to have to be some changes to the egress, to the streets that are in this area, both Wood Road and to Mountain View Road. I realize, Mountain View Road, I think part of that is in Campbell County and part of it's in Lynchburg. So I think there's obviously going to have to be some coordination between the two different localities on that. But I guess the way I see it is, if this is approved, that there are just going to have to be some, probably some tax dollars at work to try to make some improvements to the streets in this area to make it more workable for this many more people coming and going and living in the neighborhood. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Sir, you've... Well, no, you've already spoken today, sir. I don't mean to be difficult, but you've had your chance. Now, there was a question, I believe, about the emails because I think all the commissioners have received some joint emails. We've received some singular emails. I think probably the best approach will be, and I've responded to all the emails that I've gotten and thanked them for sharing them with us, we will read those comments when we have all of the commissioners here presumably on the 24th. So the comments that we've gotten by email are very welcome. They're taken seriously. But again, recognizing that this, that this hearing is going to continue to the 24th, we will address the, are taking into consideration the emails, the communications we receive through emails at that, at that meeting. Is there anyone else that's here to speak against and opposition to the conditional use permit?
Thank you for listening for our concerns. My name's Keith Ballengee. I live at 1529 Lockwood Road. I agree with everything that's been said here previously before me. And I think a lot of it has to do with the traffic. I've lived there for four years. And like the gentleman said about the lady with the wheelchair and people walking up and down the streets. But the main thing I wanted to add to this development is there's another development going in on Wood, on the corner of Wood and Lockwood, which is going to add even more traffic to that area. So I just wanted to bring it up. Here about a year ago, I contacted the city about the dead-end street on Lockwood, okay? And I asked them if they would put up a dead-end street sign, which they did, and I'm glad they did. Because we had tractor-trailers, construction trucks, things going down Lockwood all the way to the end. They get down to cul-de-sac and they can't turn around. So there's a lot of traffic in and out of there. And since they put the sign up, that has helped some, but it's still bad in there. Like she said, lady said about the school, it's a hazard trying to get off of Mountain View, turn left or right on Laxton Road. And I've also, I hadn't heard anybody say this, but there's buses that come through Wood Road and Mountain View. And we all know how large buses are. So that's another big concern. So that's about all I got to add to that.
All right, anybody else in opposition that hasn't spoken? Well, as I said, we take your, we welcome your comments. We take them very seriously. We know that this is probably the most important asset in your life, is your home and how it affects you. And we will continue to, this meeting until the 24th. And those of you all who were here, who are not speaking today, we understand you certainly want to be here in front of what should be the entire commission. But we thank you for your patience. Mr. Walton?
Is there any way that we can get copied as well on the emails that were sent to you? There may be some items that we can assist in addressing, working with the developer?
There'll be a matter of public record on the 24th. I will write back to the people that I've gotten emails from. And if you'll provide us with your email before we leave, I'll ask them to forward the emails to you.
Absolutely.
I don't feel comfortable...
I completely understand.
Forwarding somebody's email without their permission.
Sure.
But sure, I'll do that. I'll copy the other commissioners on it in case somebody has been sent an email that all of us haven't. Because all the ones that I've gotten have been sent to everybody. But you may have gotten some.
I've only had one, which just came through.
I'm sorry, anything that's been sent to you in this capacity is public information. It has to be shared. So you'll need to provide that. And his request is an expression of the Public Information Act. So you need to provide those to Mr. Walton.
Okay, well, it's simple enough. Makes my job a little bit simpler. So, thank you.
Can we forward to him, please?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Without anybody else here in opposition to the petition at this point, we will continue the public hearing on this particular conditional use permit till the meeting at 4:00 on Wednesday, the 24th of January. Thank you all again for your attendance. Will you do all that for us, Robin?
What is the email address that we can actually send information to you or ask questions about? Is it actually on the website?
She's going to do it. But go ahead and give them your card anyway. She'll do it.
And there's a roster of all of them and a link to their email. You can just click on the link and you'll be...
Planning, and then I should be providing the link?
Yeah, it's actually under Planning Commission Information. Okay? And if you have any travel... Just a link called Planning Office and all that. Is that all our business?
I think. I'm not aware of anything else.
Can we just sort of round those?
Well, let's wait till all these folks clear out.
They might be able to...
Yeah, that's true, so. Tom, we're going to make a motion to adjourn here in just a second because I don't think we have any other business.
I move that we adjourn.
All right, we have, second, all in favor by CDI?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.